I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to everybody for whose citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on your agenda, we need a motion to nominate a president.
I would just ask this, where do you end up with council members?
Yes, because I'm going to use four minutes.
If we're in speed here, I would like to nominate Shannon McCaffrey as president.
Do you accept that motion?
Yes.
Any discussion? I would accept the nomination.
Okay, so there is a motion to nominate Shannon as president. Is there support?
Sure, high support.
Okay, roll call, roll pad. Okay. Baracko?
No.
Light?
No.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Dick?
No.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Okay, so we are still meeting a motion to nominate. Come on, people, don't be rude to me because I'm done as soon as we get this done.
I motion to nominate Mr. Dick.
Hold on, I gotta redo that.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to nominate Jake Dick, and we have support.
Yes, support.
You made the...
Support.
Okay. Okay, hold on.
Yes.
Light?
No.
McCaffrey?
No.
Dick?
Yes.
Baldwin?
No.
Make a motion to elect Mr. Baldwin remain president of the council.
Okay.
Support.
Do you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Okay, and that was light.
Yes.
Light?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
I'm just gonna kill it by saying that.
Take it, take it, take it.
Okay, I will have to turn this meeting over to you for the next.
The election of a president. Would you like me to do it again, Mr. President?
Please.
I don't know that I can nominate myself.
I nominate... You can, yes.
I will nominate.
So who's really gonna do it?
Ten and ten.
Ten and ten?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, roll call again, Baracko?
Yes.
Light?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
All right. All right, moving along now, let's do the approval of the tonight's agenda. I'm sure we've all had a pretty look at it. Gentlemen, I know that we have some council members here who have any questions. Please, if I go too fast, please stop. The treasurer has asked that you add the addition of signature cards, bank signature cards, because Katie Moore, which is your other person in case, also, we need one more signer.
May I ask to have something added? At the last meeting, we had discussed the nominating of a new planning commission member, and that we tabled for this meeting.
I agree, I think it should be added. We did table it for this meeting, and that would be Resolution Number 2016-6. And I assume we're just gonna add all, both of those number eight and nine under unfinished business?
New business, actually. Well, the signature cards would be new business, and the party appointment would be two of these at first, so that would be, yeah, signature cards would be number one under new business, and the planning commission appointment would be number two.
Mr. President, I could ask a couple things. For the planning commission, the vice arrest committee, the zoning board and whatnot, the street administrator, I think that also needs to be done, whether it's two years, maybe only one week, or whatnot.
We're going to definitely have to have a street administrator.
I know Shannon's currently holding two, she's getting ready for one. And then my other normal request is to add the Wheelock, Lock and Train project, however, I will hold off on that request, and ask you if you could give the new council members some literature and information, so they can get caught up.
I would be happy to do that.
I appreciate it.
I'll get you as much as I can, and I'll send you some contact numbers, so you can call directly down at the office and report to us.
So you're not making that request?
I am not.
You had it typed in. You're not, everyone?
You had it template.
He's watching, he's looking at what I have.
Baldwin, this is...
Thank you very much. All right, we're all set with you.
Well, we get a motion. Were we just making those two additions for now?
Yeah, with the two additions that are added.
I believe there's three at this point. We have a street administrator under...
Oh, you are gonna do that, okay.
I do believe that we should. I believe that's satisfactory to everyone at this point. Signature cards, the resolution, and the street administrator.
Street administrator, okay, got it.
New business, three additions. All right. Now we're back up to the top with the approval of tonight's agenda.
And Mr. Dick, and did somebody support that?
Support that?
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Baracko?
Yes.
Light?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Now, the approval of the minutes from our October 10, 2016 meeting. Discussion, new members, any questions? I will make a motion to accept a regular meeting of minutes from October 10, 2016. Looking for support.
Support.
When you're ready.
Baracko?
Yes.
Light?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
The next one is our special meeting, October 14, 2016.
Mr. President, a concern I have is that this special meeting was announced as a read on the 12th for a 10:00 AM meeting that shows on the, excuse me, shows me as unexcused. I did not know of this meeting until it was brought to my attention at a resident, who had questioned why I'm here. It also states that in the charter, special meetings shall be called by the clerk on a written request of the president or any two members of the council on at least six hours' length notice to each member of the council, served personally or locked in his usual place of residence. None of that process was followed. I also question why nobody on the council, as they have done in the past, has made phone calls when other council members were not here. I checked my phone records, nothing was done. It's hard to make a meeting when you're unaware of it. Therefore, I'm asking that to be changed as an excuse.
I can do that, or we can table this until next month, when I can get, I can talk with our administrator and clear all this up. That would be satisfactory. Or I can definitely do that, as far as you would definitely be excused. I guess, which would you rather do? Would you like an explanation, because I really can't give you that.
I'd look for an explanation.
You just want to be excused.
Absolutely.
Let's, I will add that in.
Okay.
And new members, if you have any questions as far as what happened here. We sold a bunch of old equipment that we had, and came very close to covering the cost of the new spreader, the reason we bought the spreaders. We have trouble with one that we're still working on, and we brought up the speed on that as we go forward. If we procrastinated and did not do anything right away, we'd be looking at okaying it tonight, and then trying to get it put on. As it turns out, the weather's been good, but we're at that time of year that anything can happen. To keep the residents safe, it's obviously the best thing to do is to call the meeting and go forward. Any other questions?
Hey, do you want to address this now, or are we approving the minutes? Because I was gonna bring this up on our administrator.
Would you like to table this and talk about this later with the administrator?
For time reasons, yes.
Let's do that.
Okay.
We're gonna table that.
We can approve the minutes.
Yes.
Well, no, you can approve the minutes, I'm just gonna bring up further discussion on the actual sale of the equipment under the administrator.
You want to do it under administrator?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we are going to approve the minutes?
Yes.
With Mr. Dick being listed as excused.
That's correct.
Okay, and Baldwin, you've made that motion.
Yes, I saw that.
Everyone's...
We're all here.
Okay, Baracko?
Yes.
Light?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Okay.
We're all set on Ellen. The next one is the treasurer's report, that is the approval sheet.
And the treasurer wanted to note that the public improvement fund was listed as having a balance of $18,588.88, and it actually has a balance of $18,585.88, which was a $3 difference, and so that made a $3 difference in your balance at the bottom of $930,000. And not three.
Any questions on that? Any discussions, gentlemen?
I know we had, Mr. President, I know we had discussed, had discussions, anybody talks of the construction 2013, and that amount of $15,168. You want to wait until next year, December, to have a discussion, but I think that's something that should be brought up. Because I tend to vote no on the central reasons for that, even though nobody has asked, is because we have taken money out of that in the past for other projects, even though the actual loan, if you will, that was for the bridge near the street, that road, was actually complete. So therefore, that fund balance should go back into the actual fund itself, not be a continuous leftover for spending.
You would like to have that put up in the agenda for December, the first of the year?
We can do it for December, so we can start fresh in the first year.
First year. Any other questions? If not, you can put a motion to accept.
I make a motion that we approve the treasurer's report dated November 14, 2016, with the change that the treasurer has made to the $3 decrement for the public improvement fund, and also the $3 decrement in the total of the account balance.
Support.
You have to...
Yes.
Dick?
No.
Baldwin?
Yes.
This could be the bills and transfers, the green sheet.
I have a second sheet, Mr. President, I made a fed rock express lampstone fifteen hundred bucks.
I don't know what I spent, what? No, I did not. I was applying, so...
I know we had some concrete working done on some driveways, and that was on our last report, so I was just kind of curious about this one.
I assume that was used for a long road someplace, but I'm not sure.
I think the second or third check that was written on the bed that he turned in, he didn't get paid until that driveway was done, or this driveway was done, or the last driveway, so there was probably three checks written, written to him to pay the bed he had, because there were, I believe, the three driveways, fifty thirds, so that was probably the last driveway. He didn't get paid all the months, he got paid as, he got a project on, and that wasn't all done in one week, or it was over a period of twelve, thirteen, fourteen days, depending how they could get concrete, because when they're running eight to nine hundred yards up here a day, you just can't get concrete when you want it, you gotta get it scheduled and get it. I'm sure that's what that check was for.
Gentlemen, anything else? If not, I'm looking for a motion to accept the bills and transfers.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bills and transfers dated November 2, 2016 for the month of October, 2016.
Support.
Yes.
Light?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
I'm just writing in for the comment, and still free, the first round is exempt items only, please. The unfinished business, we have parks and rec, if you would speak for under the half.
I think Katie, I may be looking to you for some help on this, because I don't have my notes, but we, they, they had signs installed on the shed with the park rules. The split rail fence was completed up along Eagle Road, behind the monument, that's there by the turnaround. We discussed there was a grant that we could apply for, it was a small size grant, I want to say maybe like $1,500, and we were coming up with ideas as to how to possibly spend that money, and it was more for, like, we were thinking more like small improvements, instead of trying to get something big, like, some of the ideas that were being thrown around, and I don't know if anything's been decided ahead, were mulch for some walking trails, some markers for a walking path, somebody had mentioned a bench for, for some area, and the other ideas are slipping me. Other, oh, signs indicating like where the park is, and where other walking trails are, and then what they are, next is gonna be sledding hill rules, because some of the rules were, what we felt were kind of silly, like limitations on what kind of sleds you can have, and some of it seemed to be, you know, like no saucer sleds, you can't go down the hill headfirst, while when you don't have much of an incline, just sitting, I mean, as a kid, just sitting and sledding down a hill, that you're only gonna go about two miles an hour down, and probably barely get to the bottom of the hill, just didn't seem very fun, so we were gonna kind of talk about different rules for the sledding hill, and is there, Katie, Doug, is there anything that I'm missing?
No, it's free.
Okay.
Yep, you can add.
Can I ask, do you have any questions?
Do we apply the $1,500 in?
It has, it has to be in by the 18th, I haven't, I haven't looked at email today, but I know Angie was working adamantly at getting, getting that to be applied for, in hopes that we could get it.
Okay, so clarification, is it just a broad grant, or anything we decided to use it for?
Not, it can't be used for anything, it has to do with, with like walking trails and equipment, or signage, or it's to encourage walking, so it can't be, like, you can't buy a swing with it. It has to be, you know, like signs letting you know that, hey, there's a walking trail over there, or it has to be for something you could walk to, whether it was a piece of like exercise type equipment, or something that involved, what I'm taking it as being health related, is that, you had a lot of information on that, Doug, on what we could use that grant for.
Yeah, it was, it was a good, useful discussion, and it's $1,500 in signs, this is to athletes, this is to the high school, information signs, a sign every so often to do a certain kind of exercise, and something stationed, different stations along the way, stop here and do five pushups or whatever, but it was, it was not for, like you say, it wasn't for construction, it wasn't to buy equipment, it couldn't be used for classes, could be used for instructional purposes, to nutrition for runners, or whatever, but it was, it was basically to encourage people to walk and exercise. Very broad. And we, we wanted it.
Yeah.
No, go ahead. Is there a master plan for the parks that I could give you anything about?
Yes, there is one online, on the Village website, on the left, and he has Parks and Rec, and the Parks and Rec plan is there.
Alongside everything we want to do to the park?
I, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure as to what the dates are on it, but I know that they're talking about further updating like the true master plan, and I know in, in the Parks and Rec group, we've talked about revamping some of the Parks and Rec plan to update it a little bit, and to bring it more into today's type thing, but yes, you could get your hands on one. I even have an extra one at home, I know I had a couple of them, if I come across one, I can always drop it by for you.
Then also, is there a, I guess, is certain fundraising or budgeting that Parks and Rec is trying to do to raise this money?
To raise...
Money for the park.
For the park.
For the grand master plan.
We've, we've talked in the Parks and Rec about the, what is it, their mission statement, and including like budget talks within that mission statement, because right now, they have such a small piece of the pie in money, that it really, I mean, to buy, to buy a couple of signs would be, would be it. I, I had made mention to the Parks and Rec committee that, you know, we, we as a committee should want to fight for some type of funding, so we don't always, we can, we can come up with a plan and say, hey, there's, you know, we need X amount of dollars that's already been budgeted to us, we would like to purchase this, this, that, and the other thing, and it would be, what I explained to them, would be easier to come to council to request that type of thing, knowing that the money's already there, instead of having to come and basically like beg permission for that money. So I know we've talked about that, we're gonna, we're gonna have to come up with something solid for the next budget meetings for council to look at and to approve, they can either, you know, they can approve it, they can, they can reduce it, they can increase it, or they can deny it, so.
You should give me, like I said, a news, I'm gonna look at this, but it seems to be, like, have we got, let's see, I'm gonna use other townships as an example, let's say Davidson, they have a park, they have a guy that builds it, like, gives a price, quotes it, costs $100,000, I don't know what it costs, right? We have someone that gives us a price of what we want to do with that master plan, so we can raise money towards that, and have we knocked on doors to local businesses, or the committee, have they done anything like that?
I am not 100% certain, have we, Katie shaking her head, no, she's been involved in it longer than I can, so.
Okay, so we're still made on what we want to do, basically, so.
Right, right, and that would be, you know, I mean, community wise, there's a couple spots, I think, open on the Parks and Rec committee, so if anybody wants to, wants to come in and join, if you've got ideas, plans, please, please, help us out, or feel free to contact the Village office, and throw out your ideas, and they can get ahold of any, any one of us on the Parks and Rec plan. Don't mean to plug the Parks and Rec committee, but I'm taking the opportunity to do so.
Well done. I think councilmen would be also part of that, too?
Yes, yes, I'm, I don't know how many council members we can have on that committee, I don't know if the rule's been set, but I'm currently on it, I don't know, I'm...
I would be checking.
Okay.
I don't know if three would constitute a, and then we were meeting, so maybe we could two.
Right, right.
There's two on there right now, or?
Right, we only have one currently.
Okay, so now you have two.
Okay.
Get a mark.
Well, we'll tell you up for Jackie whether you actually need to be a part of that, get our, that's pretty good.
Baldwin, I guess with that mark, them two would have to decide which one would be the expert show on the committee.
That would be true.
So that'd be you two, remember?
I'm a girl with glasses.
Thank you.
Number two would be the reports from the street.
You were asking for a grant, are we making a motion to apply for the grant, what's, I mean, it's gotta be in by the 18th this month, or December?
I, Angie was running with that, I don't, I don't know that, I mean, we can make a motion to apply for the grant, but it was, it was assumed that, that, you know, they're gonna apply, it's, it's free money that, you know, I mean, it's, it makes, if we, if we need a motion, I'm not here to...
Well, I guess my question is, when you go after grants, there's some kind of a matching process, is there any of that?
If there was, then we would have, we would have to make a decision.
As far as I know, it's not a match.
There's no matching.
Where, we talked about it.
Just saying, granted, you just do apply, you get it, and then we apply, we just have to follow the rules, the law, the grant specifies.
Yeah, there is, there is no talk of any matching of, of any funding.
I'll hear a little bit about it.
Okay, then last thing I have for Parks and Recs, is there any way that we can get Parks and Rec's minutes and the agenda put on the website, because it would be helpful if we are going to be making decisions, based on the recommendation from Parks and Recs, if the council and the residents have the opportunity to be able to see that information as well.
I was stealing my thunder, I was gonna add that to, to the bottom, yeah, I was just gonna add that to the bottom under comment.
It should be, probably.
No, it should be, it should be.
Right now, if we're all set, let's step to number two, with the reports from the street administrator, and as unusual as what this is, I'm gonna ask Mr. Maury to speak, because you were the street administrator, you're the one that's gonna know more than anybody right now, as far as what had happened.
Now, the new spreader's been installed on the truck, the truck's going back tomorrow, because when they installed it, they didn't raise it up high enough, they gotta alter the bumper about a couple inches, so the splitter doesn't hit. The truck, five yarder, did go back on a record, I think, a week ago Friday, on the brand new alligator, that they put two of them on there, one of them puked in four days, so they had to haul it back. So they had to haul it back and put another one on, but it was no cost to the village. They've been all cleaning up, still trying to get the leaves done in the park, uh, get ready for winter. Salt's in, we've got a lot of salt. We need to hopefully use some of it up, 'cause I think there's another hundred ton coming out the first year. So, uh, just trying to get everything ready for winter, and, uh, and whoever takes my position, I'd be more than happy, willing to help them get their feet on the ground and get running. A lot of it's eyes and ears. A lot of it consists that these guys go home at three-thirty, winter's coming on, we get three or four inches of snow, go out and check the roads. You will get calls from nine-one-one, they'll tell you you need it, but these guys from Davidson, they're not gonna be running back or Milliken, they're not gonna run back for it all night. But we can go out and check them, call them, they'll come in and do it, 'cause they're always locked, ready to go. And, uh, a lot of it's just eyes and ears. Helping them get through their, their tough times, seems like Friday, everything breaks down around here, and that's the way it's always been, hasn't quit, but, uh, I appreciate all the support I had for twelve and a half years, and, uh, I will, whoever gets, takes this position, I'll help them, because there's no pay in it, and I'll tell you that. If you're out there on a project, you're gonna put a lot of hours in for that, for the money, but it's fun, you get to meet a lot of people, get to hear a lot of good stories.
All right, with that said, thank you, Mr. Maury. Nine eleven, the waste of water in the Tennessee County Sheriff's, I apologize. I should know this, but I didn't realize I was gonna get this position, so. With that said, I'm gonna move on down to number three, code enforcement. And I talked to Dave, Mr. Lucick, yesterday afternoon. They're making progress on the Dutch Road Barn. If they don't pick up their pace a little bit, and I was talking to Mr. Maury about this earlier today, we might wanna insist the fact that they put a fence around that, because they've stripped all of the material off the outside and changed the building to strength so that it doesn't collapse under wind or a bird flying into it. And I know that he's had some issues with some of the signs. The election's over, I believe the majority of them have been picked up. I know there's still a couple of stray, there was a pair of them yesterday, and I know he was gonna look into that. Administrative, Mr. Vic?
All right, considering that the, a couple of things, the salt spreader purchase, we've got it done. I guess the first question that I have, from a meeting of last month, there was a motion to table until next month and request a list of equipment available for sale. They got seconded and moved. I don't know who authorized the sale of the equipment before it was sold. I did go in and talk with Pat, I believe it was on Tuesday, because Monday after leaving, the equipment was sitting out like a yard sale. Just to make sure I wasn't second guessing myself, Pat went over to motion with us and whatnot, and there was no talk of an actual motion. So, in the email, it states, uh, sale of the equipment, as was discussed at the meeting, there was no discussion about selling any equipment. There was talk on, we had items that could be sold, but we actually didn't go into detail on that. In the charter, the state's council may authorize person and agent to make purchases and sales within a prescribed dollar limit without prior approval of the council. However, in all sales and purchases in excess of five hundred dollars, the sale or purchase shall be approved by council. That was never done. It also says you're supposed to be getting bids and braysels and stuff like that, so we know what we're getting for a block. That process was never done. The purchase over one thousand dollars, the requirements of section twelve dot two shall be complied with, uh, no, should be complied with. No sale or purchase shall be divided for the purpose of circumventing the dollar value. And if you look at the sheets that those items were sold on, we sold three items for sixteen hundred dollars. Now, I'd like to remind council, this is not EPW's equipment, this is taxpayers' equipment. So if anybody wanted to come in here and ask how much was that nine-foot moldboard holding, we have no idea. How much was the salt spreader that we sold, we have no idea. The equipment was sold, in my mind, illegally, and this is the question that some residents have talked about in the past. Just because there's something that we want doesn't mean we get to circumvent the, uh, the events that are charged in states in order to get that product. So I'm looking for some kind of investigation of somebody, just to tell me who authorized the sale of our attached paid equipment.
Uh, the actual salt spreader that they purchased, we had talked about that, uh, the meeting prior, and that's where the motion to look into the equipment. I know that I brought up the fact of we have a lot of old equipment out there that we can sell, but we did kinda talk about the cheapest spreader that was on there, and we were, I think that there was enough money, I don't remember exactly, but there was enough money left in and budgeted for that, that was budgeted this year for the sale of the new, purchase of the new spreader. And I goes, we probably have enough equipment out there to come very close to purchasing that. Uh, with that said, the next day, the stuff went out to the road. Uh, as far as, I think it ends up, we were like a couple hundred dollars short from selling that stuff out there. And in the past, I had gone over that equipment with Ethan, you know, looking online as far as what the, the snowplow and the spreader were worth. Stuff was very old, needed an awful lot of attention, the, the both plows needed all the electrical stuff for them, they had none of that, which is the expensive part of it. One of the plows where the back part of the angle brace was on was rusted out. It really weren't high-ticket items, it was the fact it was bunged together that we ended up getting enough money on. And with that said, then there was the special meeting that authorized the sale in excess of five hundred dollars for the purchase of that spreader. With that said, it's, once again, it's something to where, this is, that was in the tail end of October, let's say. And winter coming on, we're unfortunate, it's very fortunate that the weather is the way that it is, we could be looking at snow and blowing stuff, and we had a truck that was down, and we need to have the two spreaders, and we had mentioned that last month. To not move on it, I think we'd be, you know, wrong of us, putting our residents in harm's way on icy roads. Now, it's the fact that getting rid of a, a bunch of old equipment, uh, it really didn't cost the taxpayers. Stuff has been sitting out there, as far as I know, several years, some of that stuff is laying in the weeds. So it wasn't like that we just up and sold the stuff, and it wasn't like we just up and made the purchase without everybody at least knowing that we had looked into the purchase of the spreader. And I believe, Mr. Maury, help me out, I think we looked at three different spreaders, and I think we priced that as the...
Yeah, we took the cheapest one, the other two were stainless steel. And we took the cheapest one of the three.
It wasn't like we just moved in the dark, you know, without everybody knowing what we were doing.
Well, and if I may go back on that, as you stated, that the purchase, or the purpose of the meeting was also to authorize the sale of the equipment. I'm here to tell you, you couldn't have authorized the sale of the equipment, 'cause the equipment was already sold before the meeting.
It was not the, the, the sale of the equipment, it was the purchase of the spreader.
Right, but there was no authorization of the actual sale. The authorization of the sale came at the special council meeting, it was his motion to ratify, sell the attached equipment, listed for the total of twenty-one hundred dollars.
Mr. Vic, you would be correct, there probably was no authorization.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, which is wrong. The other thing is on here, which I, I'm hoping, but I believe is a violation of the Open Meetings Act, of the notice that was posted for the purchase of the salt spreader does not state anything in here of a motion to ratify the sale of the equipment. So the public, again, was not notified that there was any sale of any equipment going on. Those are concerns that need to be addressed, and I'm just trying to not be disrespectful by no means, but I'm trying to let the new council members see what kinda activity goes on and why I continue to speak over and over again on the transparency or lack of of this council. My second issue that I have under the administrative, if I may, sir.
Sure.
Thank you. There was a zoning issue that we had for the tattoo parlor, if you remember. And the council had approved to allow the zoning amendment to be in the general commercial district. I'm asking that this council redo the motion, to rescind that motion, because there was no quote, public hearing that states that also is supposed to take place in our charter, and that's under CD three-six-two-seven. The Jewish Council should hold a public hearing and either approve or deny the request after it comes from the zoning of the planning commission. And if you look in the public notice in the newspaper for Saturday, October fifteenth, which was after the meeting, is where it states, notices hereby given, the Village, the Jewish Village Council will hold a public hearing on Monday, October tenth, two thousand six, excuse me, two thousand sixteen, at the hour seven P.M. There was no public hearing done to allow residents to speak, whether or not they would like to have tattoo parlors in the commercial district. So with that being said, I am making a motion to rescind the motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation and approval to the addition of the tattoo parlors as permitted use in the general commercial district zoning and remove tattoo parlors from the industrial zone. And the further motion will then be readdressed at the next meeting in December, once we have a public hearing. I would support that.
Uh, discussion, uh, we might wanna be careful here in talk with our attorney before we move one way or another. I'm not sure what the repercussions could be.
There is no, well, I can, you want me to explain what a rescinding motion is?
I understand that it is, but...
So, I guess I would ask, and maybe I can answer this question, has anybody applied for any kind of tattoo parlors or have been given the right to have a tattoo parlor?
That wouldn't go for me, but to the most, that's my knowledge, nothing's been discussed in years.
Okay, so to give you an example on the motion...
I don't think that there was somebody waiting in the wings.
Right.
I think Jackie had said that it was just something that is becoming an issue with a lot of communities, so we were looking at it, I had to, but I don't think there was anybody, um, and anybody had actually called and asked about it because they wanted to do it.
Okay, so the only issue we'd really have for rescinding motion, and I'll give you this an example, if you had a board at a church, so to speak, and they made a motion to repaint the building, and then they repaint the building, within two weeks, and a board member who was not present didn't realize the church had been painted, comes out and says, I'd like to rescind the motion. Well, that would be an illegal motion or an friendly motion, because the church is already painted. But since we have nobody that's actually applied or any businesses down there, the motion could be rescinded. And to me, I know a lot of people in here have campaigned on transparency, I did as well. And part of transparency is when you screw up, you admit it and you make it right. And that's what this motion is, is to, we need to hold a public hearing and allow the public to be able to speak, and if it comes out that we still decide to have a tattoo parlor in the commercial district, then so be it. But we gotta give them the opportunity to speak.
My only question would be, because it was not in the general, you're making a motion under administrative.
It's not a motion, I, I think we better be careful what we're doing.
No, it's a motion, I'm doing it under administrative, because administrator is the one that's supposed to direct us and actually hold the notices if we were for the, for the public hearings and...
Oh, it, it doesn't, I, that's not what it says. Basically, we'd rather wear, you know, wear and put it in the agenda, but it was never published that this sort of a decision was going to be made in our agenda. And this is actually rescinding something that the council already did. And again, you're kinda doing it without public input.
Yeah, I think we better be careful on this, I have ideas. I would be happy to put this...
I'm just gonna ask you to hand it to me, because I couldn't get all that down, but I'll, I'll gladly write it down.
We basically just gotta, just copy the first, the first part of the other motion, make it a lot easier for you.
I, I would be happy to put this on the agenda for, for next month and discuss it and try to get to the bottom of it and make it be right, but with that said, I would be careful, I hope you will apologize, I don't want to...
Well, you do have a motion against, because he has made a motion before, you can support it.
You disagree?
I, I, I had a whole bunch of people when I was on, while I was campaigning, made comment that they weren't able to voice any sort of opinion on the tattoo parlor coming into town. It, it, it was brought to my attention by several different individuals.
Council, I would just be careful, I hope you will. That's all I can say. Anybody else? If not, roll call.
Okay, hold on a second. You guys, I've got your names down now, and...
Initial ones.
Yes. Barackel.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
McCaffrey.
Now, we're voting on, on...
We're voting to rescind the...
Sen...
Yes, then hold a public hearing and re-vote on it.
Oh, I hope this is right, yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Baldwin?
No.
Uh, the sidewalks, uh, I have no information on, on the sidewalks, and I apologize once again. Attorney, as far as I know, there's nothing to report with that. Which brings us to number seven. You've been waiting all night.
Downtown Christmas.
Here's introduce yourself.
Patty Plant, I'm on my own Cranberries Cafe, part of the Goodrich Atlas Chamber of Commerce, and for several years, many years, twenty years, we put on a Christmas celebration, Downtown Christmas, first Thursday of December. In recent years, we've requested that we close the street for a couple hours, Eagle Road, right in front of the businesses, because tree lighting is on one side, businesses and activities, lots of kids running across the road. So we request from the council that we close Eagle Road from the turnaround to Seneca, I believe it is, for about three hours on Thursday, December first. I have contacted Genesee County Reserves, we'll have a couple gentlemen here helping put some blockades out and just asking people to please go round the block. Santa will be in town.
I'm sorry, Patty, what's the date?
Thursday, December first.
First, okay.
The hours were five to nine, is that what it was?
Five to nine, usually I try to keep the roads closed, five-thirty to eight-thirty. Is plenty enough time.
Uh, council, do you have any questions?
Going all the way down to Seneca or Clarence, are you doing the other side of Hills, wire, okay.
Um, we just, because of the Women, the Historical Society Building, they are going to be open with cookies and stuff. We'll have a tractor giving hay rides to make a loop around. Includes the library too, that way, so.
Okay, just wanted to be sure.
Any other questions?
Was that a, was that a motion?
I'm sorry?
Was that a motion?
Make a motion to close Eagle Road from five o'clock until nine o'clock on December first.
Support?
Are you ready?
Barackel?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yeah.
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes, and I'm, I'm sure that anything you need, if you...
Uh, probably, I will borrow some bear tags.
Certainly.
I have them passed, and I either can come pick them up, or the guys can drop them on.
And our new street administrator, whoever that person...
And I'll make sure that I move them over and do whatever.
The same process we had last year, whatever you need, I will...
Appreciate it very much, thank you. You'll be on Santa's goodness.
Come in the town?
All right, I'll take care of unfinished business, we're gonna move into new business, and the first thing is the signature signing the checks, we need somebody to volunteer to be a check signer. Unfortunately, you can't make them up the way you would like, but somebody that's kind of available and hours can, can come in whenever you want. Typically, the staff will give you, you know, at least twenty-four hours' notice. Somebody that would like to sign checks. You can just volunteer, we'll solve that.
I'll sign checks.
Good man. Anybody having any problems with that, we're all set?
Okay, so then you do have to do it in the form of a motion, and what you have to do is, in the motion, you have to remove the P.
Make a motion to remove Pete Maury and add Tim Barackel to the signing check. Counselperson?
Support.
Barackel?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yeah.
Dick?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Uh, I can read my own writing, I'm ready to do the resolution. Mr. Vic, if you would, you need to, 'cause you have it already written down here someplace, I know that you know it.
Sure, you want me to read the whole thing?
Please.
Um, what was, I didn't...
Can you phrase that?
Thank you.
I support that.
You have resolution number 2016-16.
Barackel.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
McCaffrey. Yes. Dick.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes. And the next thing on the list would be the street administrator. If there was a discussion, I'd like to make a motion of Mr. Tim White, the acting street administrator.
Spark.
Who supported that?
I did.
Oh, okay.
Tick, 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 huh?
Okay, Barackel.
Yep.
Lake.
Yes.
McCaffrey.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes.
And Baldwin.
Yes. And the next thing on the list would be the street administrator. If there was a discussion, I'd like to make a motion of Mr. Tim White, the acting street administrator.
Spark.
Who supported that?
I did.
Oh, okay.
Tick, 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 huh?
Okay, Barackel.
Yep.
Lake.
Yes.
McCaffrey.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes.
And Baldwin.
Yes. Public comment. Free to speak about whatever you'd like.
I want to so bad.
I already will.
I would like to congratulate everybody. I know, like, you know, half the day, the only time I can get anything on record is by coming out here and I don't like having the motions be held in high schools. But okay, well, it is Parks and Rec for three months I've asked for, I mean, I don't know why they can't be laying out on the table, so, or on our website. But when that public notice was being read from the paper, it also, I believe you said 7 o'clock, our meetings don't start at 7, they start at 6. So I just wanted to point that out if you can do that. That's all. Congratulations, everybody.
And any other suggestions that we have from the new council? Please feel free, email, letter, call me, or anybody on council.
Email on our website would be nice.
Oh, that's, that's-
I'm sorry, she-
That's, that's on plus. We have somebody's going to work on that. See if we can't get that up and running and jump into the century. Anyone else? How about those two young fellows in the back? Did you guys have anything, sir?
Um, no.
Is your TV broke? I'll take away the batteries from the case. I'm glad to see you here. It's good. It's good to be here. Anyone else? As if not, I'm going to turn the council. Council, one time, if you have anything to say.
I do. I am in agreement with the one email address says, looking through, there were, I did not realize that some people have hotmail addresses. I thought, you know, because I've seen, you know, the administrator has a Goodrich email address, that's somebody who I email, I have a Goodrich email address and not everybody in the village has a Village of Goodrich email address. I think, I don't know, maybe adding it to the next agenda, assigning everybody a Village of Goodrich email address just to make us look a little bit more professional. Also, in my door-to-door, the past couple of months, surprisingly, there are a lot of people in this community who, one, do not want to read newspapers, and two, who do not go on the internet after they get home from work, or they don't go on the internet at all because they are grandmas and grandpas and they don't get the internet. Not that they don't get it, they just don't understand it. And I like what Atlas Township does. I have it on the side of my refrigerator. I reference it. It's their newsletter. It comes out in our tax bills, sent out twice, twice a year. I think that the, if we could have this added to the agenda, possibly having a village newsletter. It, it could list things that the council has made motions on, approved, denied, are going to be up for discussion, have been discussed, trash pickup. I know in one meeting that we had here, we were all kind of concerned about when, when do leaves stop getting picked up? When do we have to start burning them? And that was a question. That could be something that could be added in there, the email addresses, the hours, the points of contact, whether it be for the township people, for the village people. Am I getting over my three minutes?
What?
You keep right on going, yes. I'm just making sure everybody's paying attention here.
That, that kind of stuff could be added to it. I don't know, I'm, you know, whether or not I'm, I'm willing to assist in creating a newsletter. I don't necessarily, I think it going out with the sewer bills, which would be every few months, so you wouldn't be bombarded with these newsletters, but it would keep those up to date for those people who, who aren't savvy to the internet or reading newspapers or just if you can't make a meeting. It would, it would give you an idea, like something that's going on. It would offer a little bit more transparency that has been a, a hot word lately. So email addresses, newsletters, the Parks and Rec thing, I think it's huge. Being, being a Parks and Rec member myself, thank God I'm a note taker because sometimes I wonder, like I was, I was asking a couple people in the audience today, you know, for a refresher because I didn't bring the right notebook. But if I wasn't a note taker, I, I wouldn't really have an idea of, or if I didn't pay attention, I wouldn't have an idea of what was going on. But for those who don't come to the Parks and Rec meetings, I think we've had the most in our audience has been three people, two of which were children of a member, and, and they, it was three, it was three, yeah. So we had, we had four people in the audience because there was one member and three kids. And kids should come to these meetings. I mean, they're, they're the ones who are going to be hopefully using the park. They have, they have input, they're, they can be our little voices as well. They, they know a lot more about the happenings on the playground than us as adults do. So that's, I think my three minutes is up. So I'll shut up now.
Do very well.
But those are, those are my suggestions so far.
You council members?
I like those. I think, and I think the newsletter thing, I don't see why monthly couldn't be something after every, after every meeting because, you know, living in the village right downtown, I wouldn't even tell you when your meetings are for, I mean, something that was going to remind the whole community when we're meeting for certain things, and even a recap of what was discussed. I think that's where the transparency comes into play.
Right.
Because no one knows until after the fact. And I know that's my whole point of running is, you know, is, is to make it so everyone does know going forward, so.
Get some people involved.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of laid back people that want to do something, but they don't know how to use the right avenue that I found out talking to, and we've just got to give them that, that avenue, so.
Oh, and one, one more thing. I think Therese brought it up when we were pumping gas one day at the gas station. And she's brought it up here many times too, is, I don't know who, who does the website, who designed the village website, but maybe we could add a couple more tabs to the website. I know the other day I was trying, okay, I was trying, I was trying to find something and if, if I hadn't clicked on every tab and I, I don't know that I would have found it. It was something insignificant too. I think it was email addresses. But having, I don't know, another, another tab, maybe like under the Parks and Rec tab, we could have the agendas and things. Maybe there could be a planning commission tab. I know I was on the township site because there's the land development going on on M15 and I had no clue as to what that was and I wanted to find out what that was. And they have, like you were, you were saying, they have everything on their website. It goes from the agendas to the handouts to everything that's on their website. So people who maybe not necessarily know, I know that I'm probably not going to be a fan favorite in the office if I keep saying, hey, we need to add this, we need to add this, but people, people have asked. And again, if you're not on the internet, if you don't read the papers, if you're not doing things, you're not, you're not going to know. And it would be, that would be one way of knowing, you know, if you're talking to grandma, well, what's going on in town? Well, you know, somebody could go along and pull it up for, for grandma, print it off and hand it to her, so.
Without, like, making a separate website for, like, the Parks and Rec, you know, when you click on the Parks and Rec, it takes you to the website and it has all-
Or just a-
Like, I know Davis City has something like that, so they have their, you click on it, it goes to like their own planning or thing through.
Yeah, that, I, that I don't know. I don't, I don't know anything about website building. I know, I know about building a Facebook page. That's about it. That's the extent of my-
Or you do a Facebook page for it. There you go, so.
Yeah, that could be, but then somebody's got to upload it. But that, that's for another, another line.
Just tuning it up.
You got to get home. He's, he's biting at the bed here. He's got to, he has the auto-
Is that because he's on the-
Car, ready to go on more.
Don't worry about it.
Yeah, my leg's starting to hurt.
Mr. White?
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
You can make a motion to adjourn if you want to get out of here now.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
We got any votes here? Sorry. Oh, you're all right. Getting more employees, open roles from September and October here now in November. We haven't seen that paper, so. I just feel our employees are going to have a little bit of time to actually pick something and then make a real decision on what's going to happen.
What do you guys give, like, a call of the council and increase in?